The March 23rd, 2017 City Council is now called to order. Let's see there. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by Top Teens of America. This group is sponsored by the national organization Top Ladies of Distinction, and their local teen advisor is Chetiva Marshall, City of Longview Housing Manager. Please rise.
May you bow your heads, please. Loving and gracious God, you are indeed the giver of all good gifts, and we thank you today for all your blessings. We ask that you bless this meeting abundantly today, and we also ask that you bless this assembled council, our mayor, and the various levels of the city, of the city officials. Be with them in their deliberations and help them to be wise in the decisions they make for good, for the good of all those who have placed their trust and confidence in their leadership for this city. Give them the insight to lead with integrity so that their decisions may reflect what is right and good. All glory be to you, loving God, now and forever. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, young men and women. We appreciate you being here. Very inspiring to have you before us tonight. Our employee recognition tonight deals with the stormwater pollution prevention team. Would the following employees please come forward? Dwayne Archer, Alton Bradley, Marvin Buttingham, Elleroy Brooks, Corey Flowers, Sean Hera, Laura Hill, David Simmons, and Daniel Small. I'm going to read to you all while they're coming forward. In 2007, the City of Longview was required by the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality to develop and implement a stormwater management plan designed to prevent pollution in stormwaters to the maximum extent practicable and effectively prohibit illicit discharge to the storms, to systems by implementing programs and best management practices. Approved timelines provide implementation schedules. TCEQ monitors progress annually via written reports and monitoring visits to guarantee that we stay in compliance with the Texas Pollutant Discharge Elimination System and our permit to discharge storm sewer systems into surface water of the state. The scope of this now ten-year process involves most departments from the city at one time or another due to the need to not only manage in-house activities and projects, but to also educate and communicate with the public at large to implement their own best management practices to protect this vital resource. Just a few examples of programs and practices that are reported. Distributing clean, working, in our watershed. Flyers to all food service establishments in Longview. Adopted streets and adopted park programs keep litter out of our storm drains and thus out of our creeks and streams. Development Services has a key role to include providing information to contractors through both hands-out and stakeholder meetings. The wastewater treatment plant conducts facility tours, GIS maintenance, up-to-date storm sewer maps. The Water Quality Division tracks area commercial industrial facilities, sanitation, pickups, bulky items, and the fire department responds to hazardous material spills. The Streets Department operates the street sewer program, and more than ninety other activities are outlined in Longview's plan. This team represents the various divisions working to ensure compliance with the Longview Stormwater Management Plan. As you all can see, this is a necessary component of our city government. These individuals here make sure that we have a safe city to live in from all aspects of our stormwater, to our drinking water, to our hazardous materials and all that. And when something does go awry, they're the first team, first line on the scene to take care of it. And so, obviously, the city could not function without these individuals and departments that they represent. And you all do an outstanding job to keep us at the top of the state every year in these compliance issues. And we really appreciate your service to this community. Thank you all so very much. Thank you all once again for your service to the community. I know you all realize this, but that's a collective group of people that provide an enormous amount of service to our areas. So, we are very fortunate to have such wonderful people heading up those divisions in our community. We're to citizen comment. Tonight, I have a number of speaker cards. So, I'm going to call you one at a time, and I'm going to ask you tonight. We do have rules for this. When you come to the podium, please state your name and your address. When the buzzer goes off, your time is up. And so, with this many cards tonight, we will strictly adhere to the buzzer. When it goes off, we'll ask you to please sit down, okay? So, thank you very much for complying with our rules. First, we have Lawrence Lee.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Lawrence Lee. I live at 700 Buchanan Avenue. And I have a problem with noise in my community. Music at late hours, all times of the night. Gunshots being fired with automatic weapons late in the night. I've been working with the police to try to get a resolution to the matter, but I failed in that effort. And I'm here to see if you can recommend anything that I can do to straighten this problem out.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. What we'll do is, if you'll go outside, we'll get your information, and we'll get the right people on your issue, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being here. Next, I have Mike Alston. Here he comes. Oh, I'm sorry, Mike. This says if-questions. My bad. Well, I'll keep it here for that item, okay?
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Joel Johnson.
I'm here to speak on Patel issue. Does that require me to speak now?
Yes, sir. We're going to have a lot during citizen comment.
Okay. I'm Joel Johnson, 1505 North Groveland Avenue in Longview, Texas. I'm a management and marketing consultant. I'm here to speak in favor of zoning changes for initial Patel's package store. And I appreciate you guys taking serious consideration, having integrity about this matter, and doing the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. John W. Thurman.
Did a rudder to use if people can't pronounce mine?
I could barely read it. It looked like my writing.
Standing up with a pencil writing it. I'm also here to speak.
Please name your address, please.
My name is John Thurman. I live at 507 Drake Boulevard here in Longview. And I'm also here to speak in favor of Mr. Patel receiving the permission to open his store. I have, I went to the zoning commission. I spoke to the zoning commission. I've also driven around the town. I've also done some research on this. Nothing that I have seen nor that I have found should be a reason to deny this man his permission to open his store. Yes, a mistake was made. But I think that, once you take a look at the decision, that you will do, balance the scales. You'll balance a scale based on fact, balance a scale based on emotion, and come in and make your decision, hopefully in the middle, and that's on facts. And the facts are that Mr. Patel did exactly what the city required him to do. Because as a society, we all are governed by rules, laws, and ordinances. In order to have a society that functions, we have to know, as citizens, that those rules apply to all of us equally and fairly. If a mistake's made, a mistake is made. That's where all of you come into play. And I know that's a difficult thing to do. I know that you probably have all researched the issue. But I still believe that he should get permission to open his store.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Ashley Williams. She's coming?
Yes, she's coming. Hello. I'm Ashley Williams. And I'm mainly speaking to those who feel that this development is not going to be beneficial to residential areas or it's not going to be aesthetically pleasing. And I think, once you see the site plan, and I'm sure probably many of you have, that dispute will have no argument immediately because it's beautiful. Secondly, I would just like you all to know that we really value this community. These boys have grown up in Longview. They love Longview. So, it's only right that they want to give back to the community once this development goes into action. Lastly, our community involvement. I'm really good friends with the boys. And we have really great ideas of how to kind of bring the community together. And so, to those that think that this isn't going to be beneficial for a residential area, I really think that it is. We have so many ideas that are going to bring you all together. Cooking demonstrations, things like that. This isn't just your run-of-the-mill liquor store. And I think that's something that needed to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine McGlinchey. I know I butchered that. I'm so sorry.
I'm Catherine McGlinchey. And I reside at 2300 Thomas Place in Fort Worth. I'm a foreigner. And I'm an attorney with Brody Smith &amp; Jennings. Excuse me. It's now Brody Smith, Jennings, McGlinchey, and Fitzgerald. I'm getting used to that. And I represent the applicant in the package store matter that's coming up for public hearing. And I think Mitchell speaks very well for himself, so I'll just keep this incredibly brief. I'd like to reiterate that the use of the property that he's seeking, it's something he pursued in good faith. And I want to clear up on the record a matter that came up in the prior planning and zoning proceeding. It was suggested at that point that some deed restrictions put Mitchell and others in the public on record notice of the existence of a specific ordinance with respect to this property. That may have been the intent, but it was not the result. The way the deed restriction was drafted, it failed to reference not only the ordinance, but any connection or nexus with the city or neighbors. It was not stated in terms of this is a prohibition against package stores to benefit neighbors or others in the community. Rather, it was specifically referencing benefits going to the owner of the property and those in the chain of ownership. So, it wasn't a red flag so much as a red herring. And I can vouch for the fact that it really came out of left field to find out that there was a specific ordinance with respect to this property that would preclude package store use. It didn't show up on zoning maps. It didn't come up in conversations. But the real kicker was the TABC permit that was submitted. The city secretary's certification to that document stated that no ordinance stood between the developer and the permitted use. And if the city's making that representation under seal to the state of Texas, I think a reasonably prudent developer would, and in this case, did find, that the representation was dispositive. And as a third-party beneficiary to that certification, Mitchell definitely took it to be gospel and proceeded on that basis. The good news in all of this, as I think he'll demonstrate, is that his development plan's very solid. The city and the developer were moving forward with the development before this little wrinkle came up. And nothing has really changed on the merits. It's a good, solid use of the property. And all we're asking is the city continue to proceed on the course previously set so that his efforts and his expenses to date aren't for naught and his reliance on communications with the city were not to his ultimate detriment. And that's all I've got.
Thank you, ma'am.
You bet.
Dale Lunsford.
Dale Lunsford, 1512 Noble Drive. Good evening. Thanks for your service. I'm here to speak against the proposed rezoning. Actually, I'm not asking you tonight to be against anything, but instead, I'm asking you to celebrate, to celebrate the contribution of Scott Zorn and Matt Chaney and Applied Consultants to the contribution that they've made to our community. I want you to remember tonight, as you make your decision, that old roller rink building that's set empty for thirteen years on one of our busiest thoroughfares. Transforming that building into a modern company headquarters, in my opinion, is one of the best things that's happened in redevelopment in the last few years here in Longview. That's something to celebrate. We need more of that kind of redevelopment, not less. It's an issue that goes beyond District Four. It really goes to the entire city. We need to encourage developers to transform empty strip malls and vacant buildings and turn them into attractive retail spaces and attractive office spaces and improve the quality of life in Longview and attract jobs to Longview. Before making an investment, a developer needs to know in certainty what is the future development that will occur around them. They need to have that certainty. The City of Longview is the only one who can give those developers that certainty. And you take it away with rezoning decisions like the one you're considering on the agenda tonight. Approving this rezoning request, I'm afraid, will chill future developers who are thinking about making an investment in redevelopment projects like that old roller skating rink. That's my concern. Why take the risk in those kind of projects if the development around you will change? If the rules will change around you? You need to have that certainty. So, let's congratulate the work of Applied Consultants and Scott Zorn and protect the investment that they've made. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Appreciate you. Robert Johnson.
I'm the minister of the Longview Church of Christ. That is at 1401 Eden Drive. And I can't speak for all the people that are in favor of the building of this project, but I know that our congregation actually is part of Eden Drive. If you ask my wife, I live at the building. I mean, my home residence isn't there, but I'm there probably as much or more than not being there. And with your indulgence, I'd like the members of my congregation that came and supported this to stand just for a moment, please. This is part of our neighborhood where we come to worship every Sunday and every Wednesday and engage in activities besides that point in time. And just a few years ago, we went through the process of Mr. Zorn wanting a kind of open rezoning for that property and worked with the zoning commission and with the city. I don't know if some of you all were on the council when we came before that, but got the restrictions placed there that would give us assurance we had a viable place to continue to worship. And the same thing with the Exxon store, when they wanted to make a package store within that. And so, now we moved next door to Applied Consultants and have decided that that would be okay to put a package store. And everybody's thinking about the future of what might be there. I want to talk about the present. And everybody's talking about the traffic on 259. I want to talk about the people that live on Eden Drive. There are residences that'll be backing up right to that store. There are new homes being built right across the street. And we went through a tornado and have remodeled in hopes of revitalizing our congregation and still having a viable place to come worship and be a part of a community service. And it feels like a betrayal now to be told, "Well, now we're going to start zoning for package stores." And the things we were assured wasn't going to happen now are going to happen. None of us would like our personal home next to a liquor store. If we had an empty lot next to the house we lived in, none of us would say, "That's a great idea. Let's put a liquor store there." And a lot of the people are saying it ought to go through. They're not the people that live on Eden Drive. They're not the people that worship on Eden Drive. And I would like for us to consider that little community that is there because we're already getting individuals because of the Exxon station come wanting money. And out of the goodness of my heart and hoping the story is true, I give them some, but a lot of them, I can see go straight across Applied Consulting into the Exxon and coming out with liquor. That's just going to increase when this liquor store is made. And we have vagrants that like to stay in our backyard, but you understand what we're saying.
Thank you, sir. Gene Gallion.
Mayor, Council. I'm Gene Gallion. I live at 1308 New Forest in Longview. As a business analyst, we come up with a lot of different things. And we found out one thing, that people don't fight change. They fight the uncertainty of the change. What that change is going to do and what it's going to bring. And I think that's why we're here. I think if everybody had done the proper work and the due diligence and all this, we wouldn't be going through this tonight. Now, if we allow this man to open this business here, what's going to stop Pennies from coming back to us and want to open up his liquor store, which we turned down three, the city council turned down three years ago? So, the Planning and Zoning Commission heard their story, and they turned them down. It was a close vote, but they turned them down because they didn't think that that's what we needed. The applicant said in their presentation to P&amp;Z that they would police their property. That they would police it inside and outside. What is, what is to stop a customer there's coming in, buying alcohol, going out, going behind the fence, drinking his hooch, urinating on the fence, leaving his bottle there, and going somewhere else? They can't police everybody in and out that front door. And they said there wouldn't be people beside the building. Well, Harley's on the loop, and eighty has people sitting on the side of the building drinking. So, the applicants also said they did, they opened a store in Lone Star. And what a great job they've done for Lone Star. Lone Star has sixteen hundred people. We've got over eighty thousand. And I don't think we need another liquor store, especially in our area, by the church, by the school, by the daycare center. So, I'm asking each of you to consider your vote. Let your conscience be your guide. You're the future, and you're the leaders of our city. So, I'm asking all of you to be a leader and listen to what we're having to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Deidra Beckworth.
Mayor, Ms. Williams and Ms. Nadia, thank you for letting me speak. My complaint was, I had went to the volunteer center and I went to housing to see if I can get housing. And I also had went to the food stamp office to check on, update on food stamps. And I got the food stamps. And I was thinking, and I also had complained about all the information I had been, that I had given to housing. And nothing came back to me as I wanted. And I guess for a while, it seemed like everything was foreign to me and nothing made sense. And it was time for me to get out and do something and be known, even though I had to fight through it or I couldn't get along with somebody the next day. But it's worth it coming out and getting to know the people I'm around and being a part. And that's what I wanted to do, is just be a part of what the community was doing and participate, you know, either if it was with the support group. And I was glad I did it. I was glad. Everybody wasn't with me, but I was glad that I did it, even though I was stuck in the same situation. But I was hoping things would get better. But after a while, I had figured out that, that I had to make it better for myself. And... What do you think I should do first?
Mr. Deidra, we can't, we're not supposed to interact. You're just supposed to talk to us. We can't, we can't, this isn't a forum where we interact back with you on this, okay?
All right.
But if you'll go outside, and we'll have someone see you out there and try to get your information and take care of you as best we can, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. G. Floyd.
Good evening, Mayor Mack. G. Floyd, 2109 East Monroe. Council members, Mr. Willard. Again, thanks for the opportunity, babe. Just speak briefly. And I want to speak briefly on the homeless task force and documenting. I would like to ask that, as the task force meets, if you would document their work and how did they get to where they do whatever they decide. And I know that you have as a part of the goal to decrease homelessness in the City of Longview. I was at a meeting about a little more than a year ago. And Gray County Sheriff Maxie Serriano was making a presentation about the Gray County Jail. And he talked about some of the services that provided, that the jail provides to people that are in the jail. And he asked a question, and I was the only one that knew the answer to the question. The question was, where is the largest mental health service facility? Where is it in the state of Texas? Well, I was the only one to know that it was actually the Harris County Jail system in Houston, Texas is the largest healthcare. There's no hospital, no psychiatric facility that provides more healthcare service than Gray, I mean, Harris County Jail. And he was saying that part of that is that when they've studied homelessness, even in Harrison County, Harris County, one of the things that they noted was that these services would be provided, and the majority of the people that were receiving that service in the jail were homeless people. And so, that was after the number-one reason why people were understanding that homelessness was precipitating homelessness. And secondly, it was probably an addiction problem. There was some addiction that caused it. And it was only on very rare instances where an individual simply had economic issues that caused them to be homeless. And so, I wanted to be sure that you documented this, just to give us an insight into your work that you were doing. And then, when you come up with solutions and how we're going to, as you probably might say, eradicate the problem, that we will have an eye into it also. Because I've looked at some other studies, too. There was a third basis for that, too, that was way down the list as a basis for homeless. And it's actually something that was contradictory in that it says because people actually provide services for people that were homeless, they remain homeless longer. And I thought that was something interesting. But anyway, again, I'd like to just to see that and have you to document that so that we can kind of see you work and how you get there and that we can have a better understanding of it also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Floyd. I have no more speaker cards. Would anyone like to speak and fill out a card after the meeting? Please come forward.
I thought I was on the list. I'm Matt Cheney, the president and CEO of Applied Consultants, 2100 Northeast Monroe. I'm Matt Chee, the President and CEO of Applied Consultants, 2100 Northeast Monroe. Back in 2014, Applied Consultants was growing at a rapid pace and looking for a, a new home. We looked in Tyler, we looked in Kilgore, we've looked at several different areas of moving out of Longview because we couldn't find a place big enough to house us. That's when I came across Mr. Zorn and we started looking at the roller skate rink. The building that it sat for 13 years without being touched and eyesore to the city of Longview. In 2015, Mr. Zorn and I came up with plans to finalize revamping the roller skate rink. But before I would sign any documents and to agree to anything on this, I wanted to see what was around us. One thing that I talked to Scott about was when you build a beautiful building somewhere in the city, other things want to come around you and be a part of that and be part by you. And so I wanted to make sure that there was nothing that was going to be around us that I would feel uncomfortable with. We work late hours. I have a lot of employees, women in particular, that stay long hours of the night being in the oil and gas industry. And I wanted to make sure that we were in a place that is safe and is comfortable for all of my employees to work out of. I have a document that was provided to me at the location that, that was zoned where there could not be a packaging store, there could be not clubs, taverns, or any of that type of thing come in there. To find out that has changed is really disturbing to us. We made the commitment, we put a million and a half dollars into the city of Longview to beautify it, to make it a better place. And we have, Applied Consultants has invested a whole lot into a community. We're city, we're on the Chamber of Commerce. My employees give back. This last year, we raised over $11,000 for the Buckner and the Legacy Group. My employees volunteer at the Forever Friends and Co-Pilots through the Partners in Prevention Mentoring Programs. Those are the type of things that we are doing for the city of Longview. We brought the corporate office here. We got huge plans to grow. We got another 10,000 square feet where that could be another 25 to 50 jobs for employees. But I have full support from my board members and our private equity owners to move if this is allowed. Applied Consultants is doing the right thing and we're asking you to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Stacy Gillian, 408 Alma Street, 75605. I am in here to, I'm, I'm for the situation for the Patel's. And I want to bring something that's not been brought in the last meeting, something to do with social and moral issues. What I do know now is that Mack, Mr. Mayor Mack, he has brought incredible businesses to the city of Longview. A lot of businesses that would have never stepped foot in this area, we're just not in the competition with Dallas or Shreveport, Houston, San Antonio. So for him to bring H&amp;M to Longview on the border, I mean, there's a lot of great retail places that are bringing, are coming to Longview. So we need to be open to risk. A lot of people that want to open businesses always have that risk, you know, risk with having future people come and purchase their items and then having the risk to even survive. So we had to think of things like that. Salt Grass, Red Robin, Smash Burger, Aldi, all those places come from Europe or other bigger cities. And so I believe that the Patel's need the opportunity to succeed. I mean, there's nothing, we, we just need to try and give them the opportunity. I know there's temptation everywhere. We have to do the best to help our children. And I mean, we have education at home and the best education they can get is what they get from their parents. But the only thing we can do is just hope that they mature and get the best guidance because we really can't avoid alcohol. Alcohol is everywhere and parties and celebrations, weddings, bar mitzvahs, quinceañeras. I mean, there's no way to avoid it. It's everywhere in society and our culture. A lot of cultures drink, a lot of them don't. But the fact is, we, we just have to give them the best education so that they make the best decisions. We can't get mad either that there's a school nearby or that there's apartments in front of where this business wants to be. Now, I know that the consultant place that is where the skating rink used to be, they have, I believe, 34 to 39 jobs. Compare that to many other jobs that people will lose if someone didn't want to try out the place. I mean, we just simply have to give them the opportunity. It's our right as citizens. Our country is made up of a lot of opportunities that immigrants have given us, you know? So there's a lot of things that we need to consider and, I mean, the, the city has improved a lot and the only thing I can say is we, I mean, we can't be ashamed of drinking alcohol with loved ones. I bet there's people at church that buy Roniti, you know, Belacera, white wine and, you know, they drink with their families. There's nothing wrong with that. When it, when it becomes wrong is when you lose control over it. So other than that, I just pray that the city of Longview hopefully to, you know, to give the Patel's the opportunity to show what they're made of and, you know, help the society to be culturally and economically successful and that's all. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and everyone else that's here in support of the Heritage Spirits and Wine Project. My name is Arun Srinivasan. I'm a friend of the Patel's and also the civil engineer on record for this project.
Address, please, your address.
814 Crepe Martelane, Longview, Texas, and 5604. Just to address a few questions over here. Someone had a concern about what's stopping the gas station across the street from getting a, a rezone. First of all, I don't think this is a zone change as much as it is a, a change to restrictions or the so-called restrictions. As far as setting a precedence on what's going to happen to the property in and around that area, if they were to apply for liquor licenses or, I don't think that's possible in the city of Longview. I will let the people that are, the experts at, at that to speak for that, to that effect. But I don't think just by getting the Patel's the opportunity to have a liquor store over there doesn't warrant a gas station across the street to have a liquor license. That's called spot zoning and I don't think it's allowed in the city of Longview to do that or in any city for that matter. Concerns about security, I don't think it's just the use of the, the building that's causing the security issues. It could be any other building over there that's causing loitering and trespassing. It could be various different businesses that's going to bring that kind of inconveniences to the community. So I don't think that is really one of, I don't think that's as big a concern just because it's a liquor store that's going to cause trespassing. The, the other thing was about, I'm losing the line now. We talked about the inconveniences, we talked about the spot zoning. The other thing was, as a developer, I'm sure Mr. Patel and as, as well as the city, we're going to try to put in place everything possible so we can kind of coexist in the community, just kind of as far as the people, as the neighbors and the developer himself, we could peacefully coexist. That's there for any developer, as a matter of fact. Mr. Zorn's a great developer. He's done a lot of things for the city of Longview. He's done the, the brand new development on the, on the Loop, but city of Longview. But he's gone through a lot more to mitigate inconveniences that it's going to cause. There's a lot of inconveniences that's caused because of drainage issues that's been brought up in the past. Having a, a commercial development over there, that really has caused a lot more people to, there's a lot more traffic that's generated that could have caused inconveniences to the people in the neighborhoods living behind there. I don't think that necessarily needs to prohibit someone from doing a development as long as it's done in a certain fashion that, that the neighbors and the developer could peacefully coexist in a place. So I think keeping all that in mind, this restriction is something that I think would be very worthwhile to be dropped just because of the kind of development that we're trying to put in place. I think it's going to be a very good, in fact...
Time's up, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. We're now to presentation items. Our first item is for Feet for Pets. Feet for Pets, a nonprofit organization, has always been a longtime advocate for the new Longview Animal Care and Adoption Center. Animal advocacy is their passion and knowing the new shelter would have a fully functional veterinary clinic and all adopted animals would be spayed or neutered before going to the new adopted homes was a dream come true. As part of the advocacy for the shelter and the animals in our community, they have graciously purchased some very important and invaluable equipment for the shelter. I'd like to recognize and take time to see Feet for Pets and support they provide to the shelter and the animals that are cared for on a daily basis. These contributions have already saved the shelter thousands of dollars in clinic and pre-adoption expenses. The donated items are a digital x-ray machine, portable anesthesia machine, Evolution Dog Wash Station, Dog Cat Photo Booth, and Animal Transportation. The approximate donation is $80,000. And on behalf of the city, we will present this certificate to you all for Feet for Pets and just realize how important it is when we're talking about entities that the city is responsible for, when we have organizations that can help raise money and donate funds, that helps us out because our budgets are tight. And so these services that you all provide, these, I, I know you all spend a lot of time doing this and a lot of hard work and this is your passion and we appreciate that because without you all, projects like this could never survive. So keep up the good work. Don't stop now and give us another 80,000 next year, okay? Y'all keep it going and we really, really appreciate what you do for the city of Longview for, for our adoption center. And thank you, city staff, for helping us in this endeavor as well. Y'all are invaluable as well. Our next presentation is the Fiscal Year 2015-2016 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm Adrienne Deason. I'm a partner with Henry and Peters and I'm here this evening to present to you the audit report for the city of Longview. Henry Peters was engaged to perform the annual audit of the city for the fiscal year ended September 30th, 2016. We've issued our annual financial report, our independent auditor's report stating that in our opinion, the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects and in compliance with generally accepted accounting principles. The audit went very well this year. I think you will be pleased to hear that we had no findings in any areas, including internal controls, compliance with laws, regulations, and agreements, and grant compliance requirements. So again, no findings in any of those areas. A couple of key points that I thought y'all might be interested in hearing. We did confirm that all funds within the city performed within the annual operating budget that the council approved for them. Also, your cash reserves were within the targeted ranges that you've adopted. So your general fund target reserve is 10% of estimated annual operating expense. The actual reserve balance was 21.7% of estimated annual operating expense. Your enterprise fund target is 15% of estimated annual operating expense and the actual reserve balance for your major enterprise fund, which is the Water Utilities Fund, is 24.98%. In closing, I'd like to suggest that if you would like the Cliff Notes version of this very large book that is waiting for you in your chambers, that you would look at the Management's Discussion and Analysis. It begins on page four and it's an objective, I promise, easy-to-read analysis of the financial report, walks you through what all's in the report, and if you want to look at more details, it refers you to those sections within the report to give you that information. So I'd like to thank the council for entrusting Henry and Peters to perform the audit for the city of Longview and for the benefit of the citizens. I'd also like to express my appreciation to city staff, especially the finance department. They're very accommodating to our audit team and also very helpful in getting the audit completed in an efficient manner. So are there any questions that I could answer?
Any questions for Ms. Deason? Thank you for your service and congratulations to the team for doing such a great job with our finances. Thank you all so much.[1485.83][1485.83](applause) We now have a presentation, Jacob Hill and Boy Scout Troop 613. One of the most significant yet unrecognized groups of water contaminants is stormwater pollutants. When it rains, stormwater runs over yards, streets, roads, highways, parking lots, parks, and playgrounds, carrying with it everything in its path, including debris and pollutants. Eventually, the water will travel to a stream, either over land or via storm drain. Storm drains are frequently located alongside streets and parking lots. Unlike sanitary sewers that divert water to a treatment plant directly from your home, storm drains lead directly to a surrounding lake and river without any type of treatment. All the debris and pollutants that were picked up by stormwater runoff end up in your lakes and streams. Jacob Hill saw the need to help educate the public about the impact pollutants have to our waterways. Jacob chose this important issue for his Eagle Scout project. Jacob, with the help of his fellow scouts of Troop 613, marked 145 stormwater inlets with the medallion that read, "Don't pollute, flows to waterways." The Stormwater Education and Outreach Committee, along with the city council, wishes to thank Jacob and all the scouts of Troop 613 for their dedication to our community.[1561.56][1561.56](applause) Jacob, first off, the scouts are amazing and this is such a great opportunity for young people to grow and gain responsibility and, and learn what it's like to serve and be served. But more than anything, you know, when you, when you say the word Eagle Scout, that's like saying Heisman Trophy. That is, that is a level that very few will ever achieve and those who do deserve to know, people to know how much they've sacrificed and done to get to that level. And you guys have seen a need and you went out and you took action and that means you're going to be great leaders one day. We appreciate that, appreciate the gentleman back here who guided and mentored you all through the process and the things that you do for our city. These are things that we will see. People will drive by now, they'll go, "Wow, I know what happened there." So you guys did a great job. Thank you very much and congratulations on wonderful, wonderful effort.[1625.66][1625.66](applause)
Thank you all so much. Nice to be among fellow Eagle Scout.
No. I was a week below.[1650.11][1650.11](laughter) Fine group of young men right there. We're now to our public safety update. Chief Bishop?
Mayor Mack, council members, Mr. Willard, thanks for giving me the opportunity to give you an update on a couple of things that we've done in the police department since the last time we met. I wanted to, to let council know tonight that earlier this week, within the police department, I created the Office of Community Relations. This is, this particular office is going to include the Public Information Officer and a position for our social media development and dealing with our website. And we're, we're starting to receive a lot of communications and interaction over social media, so it's kind of, kind of grown to where one individual can't handle everything effectively. So our goal is to improve communication with the community through accurate, timely information. As part of this creation of this office, I've asked Sergeant Shane McCarter to serve as our Public Information Officer and he's going to handle our community and, and media relation. Shane is a seven-year veteran of the police department and has prior service with the Arlington Police Department in Arlington. Wasn't able to have him here tonight. He's back up in the Metroplex testifying in court, so hopefully I'll get him around and the opportunity for you to, to meet him. Officer Christie Bryan, who was our previous Public Information Officer, is going to stay in this office of media relations or, or community relations and handle our social media development, all of our social media platforms, our website, and handle our special programs. So I just wanted to make you aware of those, of those changes. Also, the Giants of Law Enforcement Banquet will soon be coming up. That will be Tuesday, May 16th, at Mod Cob Activity Center. Doors open at 6:00 PM and the program starts at 6:45. This is our annual awards banquet and also our Peace Officer Memorial Service for that week of, of Police Memorial Week as well. Tickets are $15 each. They're available at the police department or you can... They're available at the police department, or you can contact Karen Grisham at (237)1100, and we can get those tickets to you. And then lastly, this Monday, we'll start the second teen police academy with all the applications that we got from the first one that we did. So we're excited about starting the second one, and we'll evaluate this, and I know we've had some questions and some interest from some other teens, so we'll, we'll continue this program and get as many of our, of our youth here in Longview through the program as we can. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions, Chief Bishop? Thank you, sir. Chief Steelman.
Mayor Mack, members of council, Mr. Willard, thank you for the opportunity to brief you on a few things that have happened in the fire department since we last met. On Monday this week, I had the privilege of promoting six of our employees in the fire department, and I tell you, as the fire chief, this is one of the funner things that I get to do. You get to see these, in this case, each of these men that have progressed in their career. They're upwardly mobile within the rank structure of our fire department, and they are making a difference to the future of our fire department. So I just want to give them a quick shout-out and recognize real quick, and I'm kind of reading from left to right. So the first guy, James Cooper, was promoted to driver engineer. The guy next to him, Justin Cameron, driver engineer also. Kelsey Trotty's the next one, driver engineer. On the other side of me, Lieutenant Ross Dyer. Ross is our EMS Operations Officer. Next to him is Ryan Nicholson, who promoted to lieutenant, and the guy on the end is Ryan Howard, who promoted to captain. So congratulations to each of these men, and I hope they continue on their pathway. One of the city's philosophies is ATIP, and one of the things that we take pretty seriously in the fire department is the teamwork part of that, the T. So we've had the opportunity to complete a project that we started several months ago at the Lake of the Pines Water Intake, the intake structure. They were having a problem with their buoy line, and this is something that the Corps of Engineers really takes pretty seriously, is making sure there's some type of a barrier to keep fishermen and boaters or whatever from getting too close to that water intake. And they had a problem with it. A tree had floated out on it and sunk it down to the bottom of the, of the lake, and it had done some damage to it. So after they were able to order some parts and get the, all the pieces that we needed, our water rescue team guys used it as an opportunity to practice some of their skills, exercise some of their equipment. So a quick shout-out to Captain Steve Dankers, who heads up that team. They do a great job, and we're happy to collaborate with other city departments, just as this example shows. And last, but certainly not least, I mentioned to you earlier, earlier in March, Captain Mark Weaver retired from our fire department. We're having kind of a delayed retirement ceremony for him. That's going to happen at Station Four. It's the one on George Ritchie Road, 2022 East George Ritchie. That's scheduled to take place next Tuesday. I believe that's the 28th. It'll be from 1:00 to 5:00 o'clock in the afternoon. It's kind of an informal come and go. So if you're, if you have the opportunity, you ever worked alongside Captain Weaver, please, please stop by and then share your sentiments with him. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Chief? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
We're now at a consent agenda. Are the items council like pulled off for separate discussion?
Would you approve?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. We're now at planning and zoning. We have a public hearing to consider application PD 17-02. Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council, and Mr. Willard. The applicant is requesting to amend a portion of Plan Development 1605 to revise a site plan to allow for adjustments to lot sizes, setbacks, and to remove alleyways located on Berkeley Street west of Avenue A. The original plan development, y'all saw last year, or yes, last year, featured lot sizes that were approximately thirty-six hundred square feet with a minimum lot width of forty and a depth of ninety feet. It also provided for a rear setback of thirty-five feet and a side setback of six feet with alleyways traversing the rear property line. The proposed site plan has changed to provide a minimum lot size of thirty-five hundred square feet. The lot width will remain the same, however, the depth has changed to eighty feet. The applicant will no longer provide alleyways at the rear of the property. The rear setback has changed to ten feet, which is consistent with typical zoning, residential zoning, and the side setbacks have changed to five feet. All other plan development requirements will stay the same, including minimum house size of five hundred and seventy-six square feet, maximum height of two and a half stories, front setback twenty-five feet, corner setback fifteen feet, and a minimum of two off-street parking spaces for the driveways. Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommend approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This does require a public hearing, which is now open. I have Mr. Austin available for questions. Any questions, council?
I do.
Or Mr. Moore?
Ms. Choi.
Yes, sir.
The remaining part of PD 16-05 does have rear entry alleyway.
Yes, sir.
And that's going to remain?
It's going to remain for now, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right. Thanks.
Any other questions? Comments? This public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is a public hearing to consider application PD 17-03. Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor Mack. The applicant is requesting to rezone approximately point nine six acres of Abstract 262 of the Alexander Jordan survey, tract 45, section three, from heavy commercial with stipulations to Plan Development 1703 for a package store located at 2009, 2000 Northeastman Road. The property is currently zoned heavy commercial and was approved by city council on April the 12th, 2001, with stipulations that package stores, clubs, taverns, and sexually-oriented businesses, as defined by the City of Longview Code of Ordinances, be prohibited. Also, there was a stipulation that an eight-foot privacy fence be constructed along the rear property line adjacent to the residential property. I want to give you a little bit of history of this property. In 2000, a rezone request was denied by Planning and Zoning Commission and city council to rezone this property to heavy commercial for a package store because it was directly adjacent to a roller rink. During this time, staff made a recommendation to approve of this request because it did comply with the future lane use map of the time and, and the comprehensive plan. Later in 2001, the applicant had another buyer looking to rezone this property, and they decided to request rezone again in 2001. This time, the applicant requested a rezone to heavy commercial with self-imposed restrictions listed above. The property owner and the applicant at the time stated that they would deed restrict the property with these stipulations. The current applicant applied for a TABC permit to have a package store at this location in 2016. It was granted by the city secretary's office with planning and zoning signing off in October 2016. Staff reviewed the zoning maps. There was no indication of stipulations for this property. In the past, zoning restrictions were placed, were not consistently reflected on zoning maps. It is not best practice to do conditional zoning, and this is the reason staff recommends plan development for cases that have restrictions placed on them. In this request for the plan development, the applicant has stipulated that sexually-oriented businesses and taverns not be allowed at this location. He's also provided an eight-foot solid wood fence along the rear and side property lines. The applicant is proposing to utilize the existing building and build two small additions to this building, with the total building size being approximately five thousand two hundred square feet. The applicant has removed the asphalt to provide landscaping to this site. He will also provide, remove one driveway in order to be compliant with driveway standards. Prior to 1978, the zoning ordinance did not actually, it did not have package stores as a use or a definition. A separate chapter in the Code of Ordinances, which was called Alcoholic Beverages, allowed liquor stores to be sold in, or allowed liquor to be sold in retail establishments. So they were allowed in general retail zoning. In 1978, a use category and a definition was created to locate them in heavy commercial and central business and industrial. Factors have since changed since this last rezone request for this property. There is no longer a roller rink right next door. There is a school near, however, it is at least nine hundred feet away, measured from property line to property line, and is significantly farther when measured from door to door. We evaluated similar locations within Longview, and it appears that this location is similar in nature with adjacency to residential and schools. There's a package store on Loop 281 that is directly adjacent to a residential subdivision. There is also another package store that is on Alpine Road that is directly to a subdivision and across the street from a school. After discussions with PAR officers, they have stated that, in their opinion, package stores do not create more crime in areas that they're located in. Package stores are highly regulated by the state of Texas, TABC. Eastman Road is a principal arterial road, which is appropriate for this type of use. Staff recommends approval of this request. A motion was made by the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve, for approval, with facade details to be required as part of the PD. This motion failed to pass on a four in favor and five against, and so Planning and Zoning did not recommend approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This does require a public hearing, which is now open. Council, speakers?
Um, go ahead.
Ms. Choi.
Yes, sir.
In the past, has the deed restriction been recognized, and this time somehow it slipped through the cracks?
The City of Longview Planning and Zoning Department does not enforce deed restrictions. We enforce the ordinance. So in this matter, we didn't see in the deed restrictions, but we do not enforce deed restriction when it comes to zoning. It was not, if you look back in the zoning map, it does actually reflect it now. We've made that change, but in the, previously, it did, all it showed was C2, and it did not actually reflect the stipulations. Previous staff, I guess they just, somehow it slipped through the cracks, and so we, now, staff has, is going through all of the zoning cases from the beginning of pretty much time, and we're correcting this problem as we speak.
But previously, had it been recognized, like in the last two or three years?
As far as deed restrictions, no.
Or this ordinance?
This ordinance, we did not know about it, so we did not, we did not enforce that stipulation.
Can I go first?
Please.
Okay. Angela, I very much appreciate the comprehensive history of this particular issue, and obviously we appreciate everyone that has been here tonight. We have a packed house, which is unusual. Y'all are always welcome. I have received more feedback about this particular issue than probably any other one so far after my three years on council, and we all know that there are very valuable community partners that are involved here. Scott Zorn is a valuable community partner. Applied Consultants is a valuable community partner. The Church of Christ is a valuable community partner, each in my district, and our new developer is a valuable community partner that is looking to come into and bring business into my district. Unfortunately, I can only vote with one side, and so I do want to hopefully convey to you how much time I have put into researching this issue. I've spent many hours meeting with individuals, corresponding with individuals concerned and interested, city members outside of our city members, residents in my district, as well as doing my own research independently. I do want to briefly identify what I believe the issue to be, because I believe there's been a lot of conversation about things that are not really relevant to the decision that city council is making here tonight. One is, this is not about correcting a city error. Angela just explained, there was an error in our city process that led us to allow Mr. Patel to go down the process and get a permit without identifying this condition previously. Our vote tonight is not about correcting that mistake. Our vote is about whether we remove the condition based on its own merits. Secondly, I personally believe that this issue is not about the blight or safety. I do not believe that a liquor, liquor store in and of itself adds blight or a safety issue to a neighborhood. I would expect that everyone sitting in this room that may disagree with me would continue to have my phone number and my email address, as I know you all do, so that if that did become an issue in the future, you could contact me, and I would expect Mr. Patel to address it immediately. The issue that I believe we are addressing tonight is whether we remove this condition that has been placed on the property. The zoning is already correct. The issue specifically is just about whether to remove the condition to allow a package store that was placed on it sixteen years ago. Angela just explained that that was a self-imposed condition that was approved by council. The majority of the contacts that I have received, both residents of our city as well as residents of my district, have been in favor of allowing this development to proceed. My understanding, based on my own research, is that the condition was put in place primarily due to the location of the skating rink next door. It is therefore my opinion, and I intend to proffer a motion to support this opinion after all of our discussion is finished, that it is appropriate to remove this restriction on the property and to allow the proposed development.
Thank you, Mrs. Chaharia. Mr. Moore?
Is it proper for me to ask a question of the applicant? Is the applicant here?
Yes, it is. This is a public hearing, and he is here to answer questions as well.
Would you, and I've got some questions for you too, Angela, so Elvis do not leave the building.
Yes, sir. My name is Nishil Patel, Six Bottle Path, Longview, Texas, M5605.
Would you please describe for me, this has been described as a, a high-end package store. Would you describe for me the difference between a high-end package store and a, and a regular package store?
So this, and this problem we're having today is based on the negative connotation that my industry has, and for years and years, I guess people just want to put one dollar in to make ten dollars. And as we modernize, people's outlook changes. And so one thing that I've done five years ago was, you know, I spoke to my parents, and I was like, Mom and Dad, we got to spend a little more money because we're not different than the guys down the road. And if you want to succeed, if you want to be Facebook, Amazon, you need to disturb. If you're not disturbing the industry, you're not going to, you're not going to succeed. So what my concept does is, we offer the same products the next liquor store does, but we offer it in a refined manner that we can offer your five, your six hundred dollar a bottle of wine, your forty dollar bottle of wine, your five dollar bottle of wine, the same spirits, cigars, candies, chips, whatever. But we want people to come in and be like, wow, this is awesome. I want to kind of hang out here, look at stuff, learn, and really just, you know, change the outlook. Like a previous person said, the alcohol doesn't make you do bad things. It's how you're raised. So if you're not raised right to stop at two glasses and you're going to go and do something, that's not the alcohol's fault.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that. You've answered my question. Second question, do you propose to have security cameras outside?
Absolutely.
Okay. Covering front side?
Everywhere.
Okay. I noticed you, you're putting in extra lighting.
Yes, sir.
I drove by there today, and the eight-foot privacy fence between you and your next-door neighbor, does it go all the way to the right-of-way? Does it? And maybe this is a question for you.
Coming from the back corner to the front?
Yeah. So is it as close to the street as it can go?
Yes. We can add some vegetation and some landscape there in the front. That's why we kind of left that space between the pine trees and the beginning of that fence, so we can dress it up. Because the last thing we want to do is just put a fence all the way to Highway 259.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anyone else?
Mr. Moore, you have some more questions for Ms. Choi?
Ms. Choi, yes.
Okay. Nishil, we'll get back to you if we need you in a minute, okay?
One question. The point has been made that should this be granted, that would open the door for the convenience store across the highway to request the same thing. It would just make it easier for them to come in with a, a distilled spirits package store application. I understand it was turned down a few years ago because it's spot zoning.
Yes, sir.
If this is approved, does that change anything?
It, it does not. The property, the property that you're talking about, the future lane use map supports retail for that area. It, you know, it is zoned retail, and so it is across from Eastman Road. That is a little, it's too far away. What we look at as staff, we look at the adjacency to zoning and the future lane use map, and it, the adjacency, yes, it is across the street, but it's across Eastman Road, which is a major thoroughfare, which is too far away for staff to say that it's, it's that adjacent to support that request.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Chief Bishop, could I ask you a couple of questions? I spent some time in the last day or so, and you and I talked earlier today. I, I studied our, our crime reporting map of, of the city, trying to determine if there's any higher incidence of crimes in and around our existing package stores that might support the idea that package stores, you know, attract crime and criminals. I did notice a, a small note of, of increased reports at the Harleys or near, in and around the Harleys at, at Marshall and, and Gilmer Road, but every place else I looked, I didn't discern a difference in, in crime statistics between package store areas and any other part of the cities. Can, can you confirm that?
That would be, that would be correct.
Okay. Second, in the staff write-up, mention was made that the PAR officers were consulted regarding this same question vis-à-vis crime reporting problems, disturbances, and around package stores, and they seem to indicate- package stores, and they seem to indicate that there was not. Can you confirm that for me?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Mayor, thank you.
Anyone else? This public hearing is now closed then. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll now have a, we'll now have a public hearing on application Z-17-01.
Yes, sir. The applicant is requesting to rezone from Single Family Two to general retail to allow for office and retail buildings. Porter Lane is a local road, which is appropriate for these types of uses, as long as access management is followed. Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommend approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This does require a public hearing, which is now open. Any questions for staff? Any comments? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Choi. Now, the action items, Consider Resolution Authorizing the Issues of Longview Economic Development Corporation's Sales Tax Revenues Refunding and Improvement Bonds, Series 2017. Mr. Willard?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yesterday, the Longview Economic Development Corporation unanimously voted to issue a new series of bonds to refund their existing debt, as well as to fund additional revenue, money. The title of the bond series is 2017, Longview Economic Development Tax Revenue Refunding Project. So you have before you tonight a resolution to authorize and approve that issuance as well. They're refunding $6,390,000 of 2009 revenue bonds, and then that will give them an additional $3.610 million to continue funding the trail, Guthrie Trail project that has begun. So we'd recommend that you would approve this resolution.
Any questions, Mr. Willard? Just make a comment. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Does any of that money go towards Phase Three, towards the Borman Trail on that Guthrie Creek?
Ms. Vaughn is here. I'd like to answer that. I think probably, that's the intention that...
Does any of the funds, that's just Phase One and Phase Two going down through Guthrie Creek? Does any of it hit Phase Three coming towards Borman? Okay.
The bonded funds would go toward Phase One and Phase Two.
Okay.
And then we also approved funding a grant application from Tech dot, which has recently been presented to us by Rollin', and that would provide us additional funds to almost finish Phase Three. So we're hoping that we'll get that, and one of the stipulations for that grant is that you have committed to funding other parts of the trail. So by us doing this, we really run, I think, a good, you know, we'll probably have a good shape of getting the Phase Three funded. If we don't get that grant, I think certainly as we look at our next budget, we'll look at how we could work to fund Phase Three, you know, over time. But our intention, we had a resolution also, in addition to this bond, to commit to completing that project. So we would have the completion of Phase One, Two, and Three. But this particular bond will only cover the amounts for One and Two.
And Mr. Pirtle, let me, let me add to that. They got a much better interest rate by keeping the total bond issue size to 10 million or less. It's called bank-qualified bonds, and they got a better savings for the refunding portion by, by just doing Phases One and Two and keeping it at 10 million. So there were a number of factors that went into that.
So the probability of Tech dot being involved in that is pretty good for us then, right? For Phase Three?
From Rollin's analysis, where their criteria, there were seven criteria, he checked all of those, you know, almost all those boxes, because, because of, I think, the fact that we have invested in Phase One and Phase Two. So that gives us a very big leg up on Phase Three.
We also got a similar grant to do the Paul Borman Trail back when that was done. So this, we feel like we've got a...
Is Rollin here?
Yes, he's...
Can I ask him a question?
Yes, sir. He'll be right in.
While we're waiting on Rollin to get here, I was at the Leadco meeting yesterday and listened to their discussion, and as I stated yesterday, I wanted to congratulate this Leadco Board for being such a forward-thinking board who is looking to our future. Because when we first started this process, I know David and I were hoping to find a way to maybe get part of Phase One funded and get some donations, and maybe come up with something to help us get to where we could have part of this trail done. And Leadco with their, I just think genius that they do, the way they've looked at this money, and they've, they've recognized how to make their money work for them, have basically funded our trail system. And it's just, it's more than I think we ever expected as a city to have this before us, but I think we have so, so much to be proud of from the fact that they have stepped up, and I think we'll have a fully funded trail before it's all over with. And that's, that's a monumental step for our community, and I want to thank the Board for that. Rollin, I'm sorry, go ahead, please.
Yes.
I had a question on, Tech dot's involved in this, what is their role as far as Phase Three goes, as far as what's down in there?
So what basically?
Now, this is on the south side of the creek, right? Is where we're talking about this trail going into the...
This is actually from where Paul Borman Trail meets Highway 80.
Okay.
Would connect over along to the northeast, along...
The opposite side of Town Lake.
Right, Guthrie Creek, and then go under McCann Road and connect up with Phase Two, which is on the other side of McCann Road.
So if and when Phase Three comes through, what will that entail down in that, that low area right there to put in this trail?
Particularly, one of the things that when we presented this opportunity to Leadco to bring this grant forward and apply in May, was they wanted to make sure that the underpasses underneath McCann Road and Judson were intact as part of the grant application. So that would be a crossing very similar to what you've seen on HG Mosley, where Paul Borman crosses underneath HG Mosley. So they would be crossing similar through that, that we would have to coordinate through Tech dot.
So is that going to involve the Corps of Engineers on this?
What happens is, so it's a little early to talk about that, so what happens in this is, we'll do some preliminary alignments and some details on how to avoid wetlands areas, to minimize impacts, and do our best to maintain below the threshold that's required to get an individual permit. So until we do, actually do the surveying on the ground and actually determine where those wetlands are, we hire a consultant that goes with us and walks the creek and tells us, stay away from this area, you can move over towards this area. So we do our best to minimize those, to mitigate those impacts.
Okay. So this is designed, will there basically be a bridge over that creek to get over from one side to the other to Borman?
Yes, there are, actually are some bridges that we'll have to place, much like we did on Paul Borman Trail that...
Is that going to impact the area, condense the flooding that goes on there at this point?
No, sir, it is not. That's one of the things that we're fortunate enough to have a model to review the impacts of the floodplain and the floodwaters and make sure we don't impact those.
What part of this, if any of it, would be cleared up? Are we, are we still more concerned about the wetlands? Are we going to go back in there when we, when we start Phase Three? Are we going to be cleaning up any of that stuff that's down in there?
A lot of what, what people consider cleaning up, there's, those are different interpretations, so I'm not sure exactly which areas we're talking about. Many of those areas that look sort of marshy and look sort of unpleasant or unappealing to the eyes, unfortunately, a lot of those are wetlands, and those are areas we have to avoid.
So we'll have a report before we start Phase Three that'll lay out everything that's going to happen at that point.
Right, right. We'll certainly have an alignment, and then when we...
Because all, let's see, two of the phases already, well, Phase Two comes through me and Phase Three. Not sure where Phase One starts and stops at, so it's...
Port District Four.
Right.
So, okay. Well, I know that when, you had told me once before, when all this had gone about cleaning up the creek and everything there along McCann and down in there, that the Corps of Engineers had been involved a lot in this. We're going to have to have them come back in and study this again?
No, sir. And I'm sorry, when we actually did improvements to the creek banks in Guthrie, that many people may argue those weren't improvements because of their appearance, the way in which we improved that creek was dictated by the Army Corps of Engineers. What we do as far as building shared-use paths is basically trying to avoid having impacts with them to minimize dealing with them.
Okay. All right.
I think this is great. Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. While you're here, question, for the grant application, those funds that are being applied for, that we've applied for through Tech dot, what pool of money does that come out of? Is that, I'm just asking for information purposes.
It's the set-aside transportation enhancement grants.
Okay.
And those, those set-asides, they called for them in January, so it was really fortuitous that we were in this position of dealing with Leadco and able to bring this as an opportunity, when they were considering leveraging money anyway, to consider leveraging their money to get even more of those dollars.
And the deadline that you guys are applying for now is May?
Yes, the deadline for the submission is May 22nd, and the results after the review from Tech dot will be in the fall of this, this fall, so Fall 2017 is one way or another.
Do you foresee those dollars being streamlined in any way? Just out of curiosity, have you received anything from the government? Because I know Tech dot will, they'll sometimes send information out saying that some of those dollars may be reallocated.
No, they've, they've actually issued this call, so I think the funds are there. So now it's just us to do the hard work and a good job in the grant application to get those funds.
Very good. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
So why, why is Tech dot involved? I'm curious, is it because of 80 or is it because of McCann, or?
These are federal set-aside dollars for the transportation alternatives, and so the feds generally funnel those dollars through the state agencies. So they administer that grant and charge for the administration of it.
Yes. Public hearing going on here. Okay. Is there a motion? And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. Yes, please.
Could you be out of order for me to say one thing about the amphitheater?
No, go ahead.
As you know, we started feasibility, I just want to let you know, the feasibility has been a little bit longer, because we asked them to do an economic impact, which should tell you that we probably have a good answer on this being a good market for the amphitheater. So that's a little bit longer, and I've talked with Andy that, you know, we would like to have a joint presentation of that with public invited on May the 3rd at Maude Cobb. And so hopefully, we can get that on y'all's calendars. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We are now to, an ordinance designated across a 9.4 acres of land as Park Life Development of the Green. Mr. Karen? Oh, oh, wait, wait, I'm sorry, sorry. Sit down, Scott. Stop. Angela, you always go before Scott. Resolution Amending the Financial Management Performance Criteria. Ms. Cohen?
Good evening. The city provides services that by their nature require billing method. Two of these services are water utilities and emergency medical services. Both departments do a good job collecting. For example, water utilities has an average collection rate of 99%, meaning that only 1% annually is turned over to collections. But eventually, a portion of those accounts will become uncollectible. And what are some of the reasons that the city would deem an account to be uncollectible? One would be legal. An example is the debtor is deceased, or could have filed bankruptcy. Or it could be that the cost is greater than estimated recovery amount, or that the account has become aged, and in this policy, that means it would be older than seven years. This is a sample of industry collection rates. This was provided by the ACA International, and this is on accounts that have already been turned over to collections. And it shows that up to six months, you have a 20% chance of collection. After 12 months, it goes to 17, and after that, it really falls off. And anything over three years is only a 1% chance for collection. The city will monitor this policy through a monthly written write-off amount reported to finance and an annual write-off amount that will be reported to council. And I can answer any questions you might have.
Any questions, Ms. Cohen? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Angela. Now, Mr. Karen, ordinance designated across 9.4 acres of land for Development of the Green.
Good evening. And actually, if you don't mind, I'm going to cover both the, this one and the next item in one presentation to save a little bit of time for you folks tonight. So we're excited tonight to, to talk about two different things. Number one, the comprehensive plan requested that the city look at adding park acreage to our park system. And so what we're doing tonight is this, the section of Spur 63 and 31 had been designated and purchased as drainage property, and we would like to consider that as a park. And so the first one is an ordinance to allow for that to be dedicated as parkland. And so on the board here, you can see what the park is going to look like. We're pretty excited about the project in the green, and we actually had a pre-bid meeting this, this afternoon, and we had very good attendance. We have the bid opening scheduled for next Friday. We anticipate a very competitive bid on that project, and then presenting that to you for a city council award at the next, at the April 13th city council meeting. So the one thing that we'd like to do is approve the ordinance for dedicating this as parkland. The second item on this is part of the grant that we received for this project, the $400,000 grant from Texas Parks and Wildlife, is a requirement to set aside a portion of that site as wetlands and open space, and that 2.57 acres that you can see on the left side of the screen is that designated area for the wetlands and open space. And essentially, it's an undisturbed area within the park that, that we can't do anything with in perpetuity. So I'm here tonight to answer any questions, and I know Mr. Ogie with Keep Longview Beautiful is here as well, and they've been, they were the spearhead and the lead on this project, and we're excited to get it underway.
Any question, Mr. Karen? We will take the 9.4 acres first. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Take the 2.5 acres next. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. Now, items of community interest, Mr. Moore? Ms. Snotty?
Yes, I do have one announcement. So it's Kick Hat. The Pine Tree Precision Drill Team is busy preparing for their spring show, Road Trip Across America. Performances will be April 6 through 8. All performances are at 7:00 PM at Pine Tree Road Auditorium. Tickets are available. Thursday night tickets are unreserved seats, all $5. Friday and Saturday tickets are $10 for reserved seats. You can also go online to tickets to the city.com to get those sooner. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
I have nothing.
Ms. Shahara? Mr. Wright?
Oh, yes. I don't know if you remember back when you were a kid, but my, there was a generation of my parents that always thought that, boy, this world is going to be terrible, and these kids will never be able to run this place, it's going to go to pot. Well, now I hear that about the kids of this generation. Well, I just want to show you something, talk a little bit about what Spring Hill ISD did. I don't know if you saw it in the paper today, but on Wednesday, March 22nd, Spring Hill High School had students participate in community service projects throughout Longview. Student groups of 20 to 30 helped at the Women's Center, Buckner Hope Center, Longview Parks and Recreation, Longview Animal Care and Adoption Center, the Boys and Girls Club, the Longview World of Wonders, and the Dream Center and Longview Community Ministry. And I just want to say, these kind of kids, this kind of thing, gives me a lot of hope for all our future generations. I think we're in pretty good hands in the next 30 or 40 years.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Very enlightening. Mr. Pirtle?
Only one thing. I've got a town hall meeting on March 28th, Church Nazarene, at 7:00. So everybody's welcome to come.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Willard? Well, we have quite a few here. Last year, generous donors contributed funds for placing wheelchair swings at various parks across Longview. The first of those swings was installed last week at Stamper Park. A wonderful girl named Jordan Hodges was one of the first to be able to use the swings. The next swing will soon be ready for use at Rotary Park. Please remember that these swings are designated to specific people in wheelchairs. So please use them only for that purpose. Thank you to all those sponsors that made this project possible. Just look at that smile. Go back, go back to that. I didn't get a chance to say it very good, I'm reading. I didn't get a chance to say that, but I'm reading. That's probably never happened in that child's life before, because this has not been available. And to those that donated and to the city that supported this, I just wanted personally to say thank you, because you change lives when you do stuff like this, and it makes a big difference. And I really, really appreciate the, uh, this effort. And I wanna thank Scott, Karen, and the Parks Department for getting this thing done and moving this project forward at such a rate, and I'm just so impressed with you all. Thank you all so, so very much. Longview Green and Clean will be Saturday, April 8th. Recycling drop-off will be at Lear Park from 8:00 AM to noon. Go to longviewtexas.gov slash LCG. If you haven't been to Veterans Plaza at Teague Park yet, you need to visit. Please help honor Americans' veterans. It's so easy to donate. Go to vetplaza.org. I was wondering when y'all were gonna get the pictures. I'm gonna say this, every single council meeting until this is accomplished. We still have some debt on this park that veterans have accumulated, but they've done such a wonderful job. When you look at these monuments, look at these, this is history, and it's right here in our own backyard, and we owe it, and we will complete this, or you'll hear me over and over and over. Give $5 Longview, vetplaza.org. That's all you have to do. If you don't wanna go to the vetplaza.org, drop it off at my office, and I will make sure it comes to the council meeting. So continue to give this, uh, your thoughts. We really appreciate this. This is something that is good for our community and our parks. Upcoming events. There are several upcoming events at the community. March 24th, Downtown Live at 5:00. It's been canceled due to Friday's weather forecast, and it's supposed to be horrible. Uh, it's just crazy that this is gonna be such a bad day tomorrow, but it was featuring the Manson family. Hold on, hold on. The, the Manson family. Hey, Jim, you okay with that? We shook you up a minute ago. I thought Jim was gonna have a heart attack a minute ago, but now it really got his attention. Yeah, so the first spring concert will be March 31st, featuring the Manson family. The concerts here will be held at Heritage Plaza each Friday through May 19th, deception of Good Friday, April the 14th. Once again, this Downtown Live is a great place to be. See your neighbors, see your friends, enjoy the good music, the great, uh, the great atmosphere we have in the center of our town in Longview. So thank you for those that put that on. Dalton Days Wild West Show will be downtown Longview Saturday, April the 1st. Reenactment of the famous Dalton Gang Band Club will occur every hour on the hour from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. If you've never been to that, you should go, and if you have kids, you should especially go. The first time they had this, my kids were very young, and I took them to it, and every year since then, they have said, when is the Dalton Days thing gonna be? And they don't know the first thing about the Dalton Gang, but they love the reenactment in the streets of Longview. It's amazing what a job they do. So take the time to go out and support this. It's a great cause, and it's a great history piece for our community. Thank you to those that put that on. That's a big event. Taste of Longview is Tuesday, April the 4th, 7 to 9 PM at Maude Cobb. If you haven't tried this, this you should try. This, and if you're a foodie like me, you're gonna love this event. It's just going around booth to booth, tasting things that we have in Longview. It's a great event to see your friends and to see the restaurateurs that are in town and to see all the things that we have to offer in Longview. Please take time to come and do that. It's a lot of fun. You'll see a lot of people that you know there. It's usually packed every year. For information on these events, please check out the calendar, visit longviewtexas.com to learn more. Please put your events on there, and we'll talk about yours as well. Okay, we are to survey item. What items do you think the mayor's newly-appointed homelessness task force should address? How to best serve the homeless population? How to reduce the homeless population? How to coordinate services between entities that serve the homeless? How to protect businesses located near where homeless populations congregate, or other? I'm gonna start from the bottom. The other, I got 14%. And some really good suggestions on that, and most of them we are covering. How to protect businesses? 27%. How to coordinate services better between entities? 51%. How to reduce our homeless population? 56%. And how to best serve the homeless population? 40%. So what that tells me is every one of these are worthwhile endeavors, and we will be, uh, engaging this and bringing this to you all as these meetings take place to hopefully find a solution to the issues that we face here in our community. And I appreciate all those involved with that, and the community as well. For fun, do you think people should plant their gardens before or after Easter? If you answered that third one, I don't like you very much, 'cause I have a garden, and this is important to me. What do you think? Audience participation, before, raise your hand. After, raise your hand. Y'all are weathers, aren't you? Think that what, you always say it's gonna be a freeze after Easter, don't you? Well, according to the gardeners, 41% say before, and mine's already planted, so it better be before. 28% said after, and 31% of y'all said, I don't have a garden. Come on. Jimmy? I saw that. Okay, Mayor Mack Scholarship. Here's the deal, we're getting close into this month, uh, March 31st. So you got a little over a week now. Get your applications in. If you're a graduate senior from Longview, Halsville, Pine Tree, or Spring Hill, give me an essay on what you think you can do to better Longview, or what you, how you can make a difference. I'm looking forward to reading these essays. We'll probably announce it somewhere in, uh, early May, and, uh, it's gonna be enjoyable for me, and I'll share those with you all as that time comes. So thank you for participating. Tell your friends, tell your families. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you all for being here.